It's used as an educational milestone for predicting post-secondary success. Elementary school is at 78.3%, which is up from 74.5% last year. The state average for K through five schools is at 64.7% there. So, we can continue to excel there. And our on-track-to-graduation rate increased from 90% to 91.5%. And our attendance is still strong at 95.5% along with our testing score. Test participation is at 99.1%. So, those are all things that are going well and we continue to push and strive with. Our growth possibilities, this was a number that stuck out right away because they put it the biggest on the report card. Our overall score of 56.8% is an attention getter. A lot of that is impacted by the score, the way they formulated the score this year. What affects us the most is that our growth rate is not as strong. Our achievement continues to do well. Our growth rate is not strong. So, with that, we're going to continue to look for ways that even with strong achievement, how can we continue to push further to have greater growth each year? Some things that we're going to look at with that is to evaluate the changes that we have made recently. We're on the third year of our ELA curriculum, so we have to take a look to see is that hampering our ability to show that growth each year? Some other things that we have to consider are the impact over the past couple of years with our staffing and having pulled some staff away with our interventionists, special ed teachers. And we have to consider whether or not we'll see, hope to see those changes with this year's scores when we're bringing those positions back. So, we have to continue to evaluate that. And then also the increased demands that we had during our testing sessions with Act 20. We had more testing this past year than we've had in the past. That could have led to test fatigue by the end of the year when we got around to these tests. We also have to look at too that our test groups were much larger with the staff reduction that we had. So, we're hoping that our numbers this year will bring those things back up as we continue to re-implement those things that we had taken away for a short period.
If you remember, Jason talked a lot about Act 20, which was coming up with reading plans for students K-3. Our state legislature loved that idea and now we're going to do that into math. So, we'll have to add a lot more testing to an already very full assessment calendar that we have at the elementary school because of our legislators thinking that we as public schools aren't doing what we're supposed to. Well, every time they add in more assessment, they're taking away teaching. Just want to throw that out there.
And one of the other things that we have to consider last year with the changes in the Act 20 assessments, we continued to use our benchmark testing throughout the grade levels because we didn't know if that new testing platform would give us similar data. So, we wanted to continue with the other testing as well, just so that we could look at those numbers to see. So, as we continue to evaluate that with the teachers and staff, we're going to look to those to see, was that a significant difference? Is that something that we should continue with? Or do we need to look at making an overall change to the platform that the state is requiring us to use for that?
We don't have any data yet at this point on your continuation of your previous.
We haven't, we haven't had a chance to evaluate it with staff yet. You're just not a great time for that.
Does that platform, does the platform require them to take their assessment at one time or can they break it up into smaller pieces?
We have to do a screener test at the same time. The Act 20 testing isn't, it was, didn't include math. So, that was another reason we continued to use the other platform we used. So, there are testing windows.
You have to do the testing in one sitting or could you break it up into 10 minutes? You know, every day you come in for 10 minutes to do little pieces of the test versus that anxiety that kids sometimes get with testing.
For, for the state exam tests, for the forward tests, we have them in larger chunks.
The, 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 the Act 20.
Oh, those are, those are relatively smaller chunks for the assessment because of the benchmark testing. For last year for us, it was time-consuming because we were learning how to use it and working through that with staff, so.
And like with Act 20, you have your screener and then if they score at a certain percentage, you now have to do diagnostic, which can be anywhere from four to six additional tests. And it's all one-on-one. So, a lot of it is teacher-led, so it took away with our interventionist and them meeting there. I think we looked at it was about three weeks where kids weren't receiving that support.
Yeah. And that, that is one of the larger impacts of it is that time that it takes away from staff with that curriculum and the intervention time. So, we're going to continue to evaluate and look for areas that we can make improvements and also areas where we can be more efficient.
I'm going to say that every year I hear this, it's just, I shake my head because it seems very difficult to understand all of the different parameters that go into that end score of 50-something because I, I saw the 99% like participation and I'm wondering, well, what is that at other schools? You know, are they, you know, are we comparing the apple to an apple? Or are they, you know, eliminating certain kids from testing, thus they get a higher score and look better? I, it's just questions that I ask myself.
Yep. I think all those things do play a part in it. And I think the important thing to, to remember, our, our staff and we've been fortunate to have the support of the board to focus on the time that we have with the students. And I believe the staff feels that they, they have that support to continue to do that. And we know through observations and through the smiles we see in the hallways that kids enjoy being at school and that's going to continue to help those scores and that's what we're going to keep working towards.
I follow a congressman on social media that recently said, "Average test participation rate at Wisconsin public schools is about 91% and at charter schools, it's about 45%."
An apple to a rotten tomato.
I'm just sharing numbers. You can, you can interpret that however you want to, but that's the answer to the question.
All right. Thank you.
If you have other questions, don't hesitate to let me know.
Oh, we'll, we'll come back to that.
You go.
So, this is always an exciting time for me because who doesn't like playing a game where they change the rules a little bit each year? So, I guess the things that I wanted to highlight, our overall score for the middle school was 78.6. It exceeds expectations and that, that really has, I mean, we've stayed with that exceeding expectations for a while, but I did note that it is an increase of 5.5 points. I don't, again, I don't know if that has to do with us. It's hard to tell. Is this because we're making improvement or is this because they've changed the?
The state has told us, "Don't use any previous report cards in interpreting this year's report card." And they've said that the last few years, right?
Yeah. So, what I always did focus on each year is where we are in line with the state average because I figure if they're drawing this line for the state, then we can see where we're at as well. And what I like is the fact that we are higher than the state average for both ELA and math. Our growth is, is the only spot in ELA that we're a little lower than the, the state average. Our math is still showing that we're growing higher than what, and again, that state picks that, that two-thirds spot as, as kind of their, what they feel is, is right. And again, I, I think part of where we're looking at our growth is the fact that we have enough students who are performing where we want them or higher. And so, it's very hard to show growth when, when we're performing that high. Additionally, this year, because we did start some things with, with absenteeism, we have a, a board that we meet as needed throughout the year to try to reduce the amount of absences that we have. So, I threw that on here this year. We have excellent scores as far as we're higher than the state average. They said what they do is they take the number of absences you have and subtract them from 100 and where you end up on there. You know, so the state average for middle school is around 80.7 and we're in the 90s. So, I, I don't, again, have anything to compare from previous, but I do know that we are making improvements with our, our absence. And then for high school, I kind of focused on the same thing. High school, we did actually move from meets expectations to exceeds expectations. Was an increase of nine from last year, even though we're not looking at, you know, that officially. Kind of the same thing. We are above the state average as far as how our ELA and our math achievement scores are. Growth, again, is the spot that we're struggling to show with the ELA. Math, we're still growing. And then the chronic absenteeism for our high school, again, high school, it was surprising to me that it's 75% is, is what the state average is and we're in the 90. So.
Awesome.
And I did have the on-track-for-graduation. That, that is something that don't do for middle school, but we're at 98.2, which is, you know, still way above where the state average is at the low end of 91.
Hello, Cuba City School District Special Education. So, the way that this works is there are certain categories of students and when we have a big enough group, then we get data on them. If we don't have a big enough group, we don't get data on them. So, I do have data for Cuba City Elementary School, but not for the middle and the high school because those categories were just smaller. So, for the elementary, students with disabilities showed a double-digit improvement in both ELA and math proficiency. It's a significant indicator of instructional growth and support effectiveness. So, then I'm just going to provide you background on how the department works on providing those minutes and instruction. So, at the elementary level, students with IUPs receive their SDI or specially-designed instruction through a pull-out, which means they come out of the classroom to receive their instructional minutes and a co-taught. And that means that we have a special education teacher that goes into the gen ed classroom to support those students with those needs. Students receive their specially-designed instruction. So, at the elementary, we have teachers that are certified and trained in WILD, which is an alternative approach to phonics or ELA. CGI is cognitive-guided instruction and that's a math way to teach. Reteaching, pre-teaching, as well as a variety of accommodations and modifications throughout the student's school day or assistive technology. At the middle school, students receive, students with IUPs receive their specially-designed instruction through a pull-out model or a co-taught. Students receive a variety of accommodations, modifications, assistive technology, pre-teaching and re-teaching grade level of content. And then at the Cuba City High School, it's kind of the same, but at the high school level, they receive like resource study halls. They also receive those in middle school, but high school is more focused on co-teaching and minimal pull-out instruction. So, any questions? No? Perfect.
For like all this testing in general, is funding tied to it? For like better scores or getting more?
No, not at all.
No.
Nope.
And so, and then they tell us, "Don't pay attention to the scores." But we're required to do it?
They're, in their attempt to make everything apples to apples, they're trying to add in, every year they add in more pieces. So, the equation, Angie, you've probably seen that some of the things we're at, the equation for the report card is, you know, 14 letters and 27 numbers divided by another set of seven numbers. It's a crazy equation, but every year they're adding more to it to try to make it more apples to apples. I, I think they're trying to do that. You can't though. They tried, unless you have 20 kids and that's called a subgroup. So, we've got basically three schools testing in three grade levels each. In elementary, we test third, fourth, fifth. In middle school, we test sixth, seventh, eighth. In high school, we test ninth, 10th and 11th. So, the subgroup serves a big deal. And if you don't have 20 kids in a subgroup, so a subgroup could be a certain race, subgroups are genders, subgroups are socioeconomic status. So, English as a first language is a, is a subgroup. So, we've got a lot of those different things. Where smaller schools, some years we don't have enough for a subgroup. So, that really throws off the equation that they're trying to balance. So, then they just don't count it. Well, then they, they end up in, in the district equation. So, we, at the elementary, I know, we didn't have, we don't have a lot of subgroup numbers. That really hurt us. And so, if we don't have 20 kids that fall into that category, that hurts the score. And some subgroups are counted three or four times. You know, if you're a third grader and you're reading and you're low socioeconomic status and you don't speak English as a first language, you're, you're counted four, that score is counted four times. So, they're trying to make a better report card, which is why it changes every year because people complain and say, "This isn't really good." And they're trying to change it. I think they're trying to do the right thing. How do you compare apples to apples in public schools that are so diverse? It's very, it's, it's difficult. So, what we do is we look at, okay, are our kids getting better? Are, we want more kids to score proficient and advanced because we, that's, that's what we focus on. They did change the proficiency and advanced cutoff. You know, it used to, they used to say only one-third of our readers are proficient or advanced. That's changed. They've got a group of Wisconsin people together and said, "What does a third-grade proficient reader look like and let's score it that way?" And that kind of jumped up for everybody in the state, so it doesn't show up as any different for us. But, you know, I, I think they're trying to do the right thing with the report card. It's just really hard to make apples to apples with Green Bay Southwest and Cuba City scoring, scoring the same way. How do you, how do you do that? So, there's no funding tied to it. It doesn't cost us anything to do the testing. The real cost is the opportunity cost of lost teaching time when we have to do Act 20 for reading. And now we're going to have to do Act, is it 25 or 24 for math? Which probably will pass. And then we have to do different screeners and then we have to do the forward exam. And then at fourth grade and eighth grade, we've got to do the whole gamut of all subjects. And then you've got to do that three times a year to make sure that they're growing within the year. Where in Finland, widely regarded as the best education system in the world, they take one standardized test your last year of high school. And they just, they just teach the rest of the time. And kids are in classrooms for four hours a day and we, we talk about this a lot, is like, hey, well, how can we incorporate some things? There's a lot of time for play at the elementary to get some of that energy out. And man, it's really hard to do that when there are all these mandates that are, that are coming at us. But we're trying to look at what everybody else does that gets good results and trying to figure out how we can make that work in Cuba City. It's not easier when we keep getting these mandates that take our teachers away, our teachers' teaching away from our kids. It's like, you know, if I, if I keep measuring my kids, that doesn't make them taller. Believe me, I measured them a lot and none of them are tall. But that's what we feel like happens, you know, sometimes with, with education, especially in Wisconsin.
So, I just have to say, number one, I absolutely appreciate you guys doing this presentation and breaking it down. I think that's great. And I have 100% confidence that you're looking into what you should be looking into, right? Like not focusing on necessarily the number, right? But what are we going to do to keep growing? And that's the biggest, that's the most important piece. So, I appreciate it and thank you guys for putting a lot of work into it. And I'm a data geek, so I was right on the report card right away the day it was like released and I looked at it and I knew we were going to come in, you guys were going to have a plan on how we were going to look at and what we need to look at and reasons behind why we might be the why behind where we're sitting with some of the stuff. So, thank you.
Funnily enough, the same week we got the news on the report card, if you want to look behind us.
Yes.
U.S. News and World Report identified our elementary school and middle school and our high school has, have been recognized for this in years past also. I don't know if that's, that list isn't out yet or if we didn't make that this year. I'd be surprised if we didn't, but they do it at two different times, so maybe we'll get this at the high school as well. But identified our elementary and middle schools as some of the best elementary and middle schools in Wisconsin. And they, the reason we bring this up at the same time as this is they each just use different data. This is trying to make everything very equitable and trying to change every year. This is more just based on performance. They just looked at how many kids are, are proficient and advanced and that's a big part and weight here. The most heavily-weighted thing on DPI is socio-economically disadvantaged students. That's the most heavily-weighted thing. In CISA III, we're the second, we have the second lowest socio-economically disadvantaged population. I think the state average is around 48 and we are below 30. So, when that's a really heavily-weighted item, this, and that was the first year that this was heavily-weighted, that, that's the biggest change in the report card. So, it just depends on what you look at. You know, some, some things will look at our schools and say, "Oh, they do great at this." And others will say, "Oh, they're, they're barely meeting or not meeting expectations." So, what we look at is we look at kids and we look at, our teachers are doing a good job. We're, we're growing. We want to make sure that we're getting more kids proficient and advanced in reading and math every year. So, that's pretty much, so that's, that's back there. And then you can see Chris and Jason each have a plaque there. One stands up and one lays down, so can't see, can't see the other one, but Chris has one there as well. So, any other questions on any of the, the data items that came out?
Thank you.
All right.
For everything you do.
Thank you.
So, should I say that concludes your elementary, middle and high school reports? Or do you have anything else?
Can I add one thing just quickly? So, I just need to thank Jason and Whitney and Jordan came to my, they came to my lower class and they presented on Bible course and did an absolute fantastic job. So, you did a great job representing Cuba City, but you also did a great job in the whole presentation. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you. And I, I did link that in my board report if that's something you'd want to look at, so.
All right. Thank you. So, if it's appropriate, we'll go to Ms. Heather.
Was I, am I giving my report?
Nope.
Because I didn't bring it.
Yep. We're not giving it to the reports. That's the report, so we'll move on to.
I thought, I wasn't talking.
Nope. We'll move on to the next part of the, of the meeting.
Fail.
All right. Okay. Anybody sign in to talk today?
Public recognition, we're going to do the discussion first though, right?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Discussion. Yep. Discussion A.
All right. A is hosting meetings off school grounds. Angie, you want to add anything?
Not really. I brought it up, kind of rolling off of our original conversations prior referendum about really trying to be collective and collaborative and bridge in that and not only kind of showing up when you're in need of something, right? So, I just wanted to bring it back for a revisit. I think I, I know I kind of reached out to Aaron and said, "It doesn't have to be," I mean, even again, if it's sound decided, I understand. I just want to make sure that I put it out there, but it could be a year from now, but on the next round of scheduling board meetings, if that's something. Think we schedule a year out, right? Like from, usually like get them out there. It's like kind of like whatever.
We do it a month at a time.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was like a whole agenda thing. But, so anyway, I wanted just to put it out there because that was some of our conversations prior to the referendum, just really trying to build community and all the little communities.
And I put it on here just because we hadn't had that conversation probably since Sarah's been on here because I think Terry brought it up as this is something we want to do. And I remember the conversation was around, well, we've got 12 voting municipalities. You know, are we going to go to multiple ones each time? Started to look around other, you know, I'm, I'm unaware of too many schools that, that change their location. That doesn't mean that we can't. So, I guess we have Jamestown one and one and then, you know, Petos, because we've got Petosie and Smelzer and, you know, all these different, Hazel Green, you know, they're all voting municipalities that go in our district. And, you know, certainly Dickeyville is, is the largest. So, that's what we talked about last time is at what point do we say, no, we're not, we can't have one in each one of the 12 voting municipalities. The other part was the technology, which Tina said she was going to look into, but Tina's not here today.
So, what is the board's thoughts?
I mean, I'd be willing to go anywhere, but I mean, are we doing it because, just to make us feel good that we're reaching out? I mean, our board meetings in general are very poorly attended if we, if we eliminated the staff that shows up.
Virtually, we do get a lot of people that watch them.
And that's perfect. But I mean, us moving to Dickeyville or to Jamestown or Smelzer Hall, I don't know that it's going to get any more people there. And again, if it's a technology thing, it just, that means, it's just, why, why are we doing it? Are we doing it just to, to feel good about ourselves or is there really need for it? I think if there was a lot of clamoring to come to a meeting, they'd come to some meetings.
I would agree. I would too.
Yep. I think having it at the school is kind of the point of it, to be honest with you. My feelings.
Just wanted to put it out there for discussion.
I think those communities have an opportunity to request it if they want it, you know, if those community members want us to, but if we haven't been approached by it or with it.
Oh, but maybe Angie was.
I'm a Dickeyville resident, so.
Angie's asking.
And I, again, when I was over in Hazel Green, we did go to Keeler once a year. That was what we did. We held one board meeting in Keeler once a year as kind of good faith for the community that had a majority, you know, but.
Do you feel Dickeyville members would attend?
I don't know. I don't know if they would attend. I don't know if it's a opportunity for us as a collective board to say, "Hey, we're reaching out to another community that, you know, we want to bridge that and we're going to host a meeting here once a year." I mean, again, I'm bringing it up for discussion based on our previous conversations about how do we bridge and how do we continue to collectively work as, you know, filtering these communities together, so.
Well, we can always revisit it again.
It's not a board, it's not a board agenda item to vote on. It was merely up for discussion. Yes.
Well, and, and from my past experience, you know, we could come back next month and say, "We want to hold a January board meeting in Dickeyville."
Because we do set the date and time, so I mean, we could always, we could always change that.
Putting it out there for things to keep on the, on our board.
I guess just keep your ears peeled if you hear feedback. I guess I'd be interested to know.
Thank you for allowing me to stand up.
Thank you, Angie. B is additional scope items to the building project.
We just got done with the Building and Grounds Committee and the item was brought up as maybe we should look for a special board meeting or just looking at additional scope items to talk about each one and kind of go through a process that we're all comfortable with of identifying the priorities and do we want to get some done this summer? Do we want to wait on some? And as, the other one was, do we want to wait on the FEMA grant or not wait on the FEMA grant? So, all those are, are big decisions. So, I'll be sending out an email just kind of see what dates we have available for that. But Building and Grounds, do you guys want to share anything else from that meeting?
Well, I think pretty much everybody heard, I think, what we discussed, I believe. Joe or Julie?
No, I, I agree.
So, good news is we, we can add additional scope. The rough one is we can't do all of them. Everything, we can't do everything in a lot.
It's not, not like when I was a kid where I could circle everything in the series of rope. Yeah. All right. Moving on to C, 612 grade virtual academy.
Yep. So, this will be an actual item later, but we just wanted to open it up for discussion because it's new. This year, we've lost 14 students to, this is just grade 612, to virtual schools and we're usually less than five, like just a handful. So, that equates to $155,000 roughly of lost revenue that, that we're sending out to different places. If, if we would have a virtual academy, let's just say those same students wouldn't have gone to McFarland's or wherever and we would have kept them in our academy, it would have cost us $42,000 to pay for them to, to go to that virtual academy as a cost per kid, but not 155,000. So, the thought was, we want to look at doing this. So, we met with Ed Mentum and we had used them during COVID and they, a lot of schools are using this. So, what this does is it allows our resident students to still be our students, which means they can still be in our clubs, they can be in our athletic teams, they can be in, take some of our classes. So, the, the goal for a lot of these kids and, you know, a lot of the reason for their going to virtual academy might be, you know, an anxiety issue about being around that many people. So, what we want to try to do is wean them back into that. So, if we have our own virtual academy, say somebody's taken virtual for a couple of years and they want to start coming back, they can come back to one or two classes here. And then maybe the next year is three or four and the next year maybe it's full-time. But there are students, we keep them. This doesn't allow anyone to open and enroll into our virtual academy. We looked into that. In order to do that, you have to be a charter school. You have to start up your own charter school and the charter school has to have their own school board and you have to have your own licensed virtual teachers. So, that.
So, that's the difference with the McFarland's.
That's what McFarland is. Yep. So, they, they have that and that's why people can open and enroll in there. So, this wouldn't allow anybody to open and enroll into our academy, but it would allow our kids an option if they need that for a certain amount of time.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
If they open and roll to Cuba City and are considered a student here, three months, two months, could they then access the virtual academy?
I don't think they can.
They would have to go.
No, it's just for our residents.
Okay.
What do you think's the reason for the big jump just for this year?
So, when somebody applies to go one, that they, there's a, a certain number of boxes they can check or they can write other. Social anxiety is by far and away the number one reason that I'm seeing.
I just get concerned, I know we talked about like the use of virtual days. I mean, it's sad that basically you're going to have students kind of withdraw from the whole social scene and interaction, like, you know, for their, for their future life.
That's why we think having our own option here is the best route for that, because if they, let's say they want to be in band, you go to McFarland, you're not, like, if you're one of our kids and you're in that academy and you want to come in, you know, for six hours to be in band, we can do that and we can get them coming back here on occasion and hopefully getting them back, you know, to, back to school here, where if they go to McFarland or some other virtual academy, they can't do that.
So, how does that work when you said they can come back for three or four classes? Like.
The follow a year, I think you're referring to.
So, they get to choose then what classes they want to be here for and what they don't? I feel like that's going to open up a huge piano board.
I was kind of worried about like the slippery slope, especially when you can still do everything, a person in school kind. You know, if I was a senior, maybe I would take in virtual and still played all my sports and came for study hall and gym or something and then go home.
They could come back for class, they wouldn't have to. I mean, they could, they could be.
But still participate in any extracurriculars.
Yep, they could.
Would that be, is that our decision for them to participate in, in clubs and everything? Or is that like a virtual school?
I'm just saying by WIA standards, they're eligible. I mean, you guys could certainly say if you're in, if you're a member of our virtual school, because we have, we'll have to write a virtual handbook. If you want to say if you're in virtual, you know, the virtual academy, you cannot be in athletics or, you, you guys could certainly set that. They're eligible by the WIA is what I think.
It was a lot with virtual stuff, so I have, do have questions. I mean, but I wanted you to finish your, do you want me to ask my questions now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, a couple of my head most curious first was with Edmentum, is it GPA or is it pass fail? And then how does that factor into the sports and the extracurricular, co-curricular pieces? Because I don't know how Edmentum works. So, what we use, we use edgenuity, and edgenuity is GPA, you know, they can say you're 100%. So, is Edmentum pass fail or GPA?
Edmentum, when we had used in the past was grades.
It is grades.
So, they could still get their GPA with that, okay. If a student were opting to use virtual and they were part of the Cuba City Virtual Academy, how would SDI be supported and there any of those pieces like, because I would assume you can't exclude any student that has special education services, correct? So, how would that support an online virtual program?
And Edmentum did admit that like, we can't meet the instructional minute requirements of IEPs, so that might be something, they're like, well, we could do that if you, if you pay more for it, or you, you might have some, and six, 12, that's not as big of issue as K5.
Right.
And we're not even considering this for K5. But, in listening to their answers, it wasn't, it's not great and I wouldn't recommend it for students with disabilities because.
So, what we're required to do, and that's why, where these questions are coming from just as we have a special education teacher that then provides SDI virtually to try to help balance that. The other thing with regards to how will we fund it, are we going to fund this and is there going to be, who's oversight? So, obviously Edmentum is probably virtually, so is it, is it a self-paced program, I'm assuming? Where they kind of get on to what they want to do? So, then who in the district would be assigned uploading classes, monitoring dashboard, looking at grades, looking at GPA?
So, last time we used Edmentum, we had a virtual coordinator.
Okay.
And they just worked with Edmentum as the in-between and, and we have somebody who's right now working towards their admin license.
Okay.
Who want, who would like to be doing that for some of their hours.
Okay.
But that would help to be something that would come back to the extracurricular pay.
Okay, okay. And I'm just thinking, sorry, I think some of these are already answered. So, answer the teachers, IEPs, GPA, co-curricular. I think those, oh, and then rigor of the program, like Edmentum classes, you know, so how would that rigor be comparison, you know, if we're looking at, like they're taking an algebra class, Edmentum, is it going to be incomparable or AP classes? I like those kind of things that are, I don't, I don't know, but I know enough about Edmentum to know like what the rigor is for Edmentum.
The biggest complaint we got about Edmentum, it was very rigorous.
Okay.
Like that, when we went away, when we just said we're, we're not going to have one of these, that what we heard from the parents and from the students is it was very rigorous. Chris, is that correct?
Yeah, we actually use Edmentum right now as our credit recovery year in the summer.
Okay.
And you ask any of the kids, they, they, they thought that this would be the easier?
Yeah, I was just going to say that was.
It's, it's actually pretty.
And the same program that we use, we run to that a lot, too. Emma's going to take it, da-da-da, and then I take it for about a day and I'm like, ah, I'm not going to do this any longer. So, okay, because that would be my question too, because obviously if it's not as rigorous, like Joe had said, it could open up, we'd have other students who want to take the classes because we could get our, you know, biology done at a less rigorous rate, and that's obviously we don't want it, so. Okay, those are my questions, so thank you.
Is there any way of comparing Edmentum to the McFarland as far as the virtual?
I guess we don't.
One's easier, harder?
We don't know much about McFarland.
I mean, I'm just along that line of that, you know, rigor.
Could we start this in the second semester, right, is what you have here?
We'd, we'd like to have kind of a soft start this semester, so what we'd like to do is contact those people who are already going virtual to see if they'd like to come back. Probably not a lot of them, but also when something new comes up, we'd like to say, while we're writing kind of the handbook for this, it has to be approved by you guys. We'd like to say we have this option, like we have one student already who if this passes, we'll contact tomorrow who's interested in still being one of our students, but in a different way.
Because I will say just, I mean, and again, I think I mentioned this when you brought this up earlier, whatever, a month ago, I think there's value in having the opportunity as long as it's, you know, really well-framed and we're not looking at, you know, potentially going on this slippery slope, but there, I have seen it be very successful for students who have legit social anxiety and really just can't find themselves in the buildings and then being able to keep connections, so I think there is.
And the funding that you, you had asked about the funding, I didn't answer that.
Yeah.
It's really kind of in the open roll in and out line items for revenue and expenditures. Right now, you know, we, we had not thought that 155,000 would be out towards those schools. You know, we, we don't, I, we don't identify it as, you know, virtual versus brick and mortar schools, but it's that, that's where it would be budgeted for. And, you know, if we have fewer kids going out, that certainly reduces our risk, our liability of sending it to McFarland and Prairie Deschene as a virtual school now and then Ossaki and Wisconsin virtual schools.
When our open enrollment expense increased so much, then I looked at the listing and you can see where they're going.
Yeah.
And last year, our opening, our net open enrollment was like 432, I think, thousand dollars, and what we're predicting this year is like 312. So, we're going back five, six, seven years.
So, maybe we looked at it and like, why?
So, it's, Erin's like, well, why? So, then I started looking, digging into it, it's like, hey, we have so many kids that are going to like a virtual, so like that's just where this conversation started, is we want to keep more of our kids in the Cuba City.
The virtual schools are popping up more frequently, we're seeing a lot more of them. So, this is probably a question, I'm sorry, one more, Chris. So, when you, I know when the, what the program was, if we have to open a course or have a course added, there's additional costs for some of that, is that how Edmentum runs too? Or is it like a?
They, they can, we can go individual by course, we can go for a semester, we can go for the full year. And it, it obviously, if you just take a class, it's more expensive that way. You set up a whole schedule for a whole year, that's the best value. So, we have flexible.
Get the option to do whatever.
Okay.
So, along those same lines, if everyone that is taking or going virtual and they take their whole entire day, are we talking about, say, 155 divided by 14? Is that like the per cost and per revenue? So, it's not more value like the normal people that go out were either making or losing less? It's, I don't know if I'm making any sense, but it's just the same for one kid as it is like triple it for three kids.
Let's just say it's for 13, if a kid's worth $13,000 and they open and roll out, we've got to send 11 of that $13,000 to McFarland, where if we keep them, we're sending 2,400 to Edmentum. So, that's the price difference between opening one to another district or paying Edmentum to run the virtual academy for us.
So, that doubles for two and triples for three?
Yep.
So, it's not, okay.
Have you had families inquire about this?
Oh, yeah. We've, we've had a lot of people reach out to Mr. Sanders to say, do you guys have a virtual option for us in the last two years? We have not. And for a lot of, for a variety of reasons, not just that social anxiety, when we're talking about the people who've contacted you. Some are personal schedules, some are work-related, some are, some have been athletic-related, some have been club-related, you know, a lot of different reasons.
Ultimately, we, we do not feel that online learning is what's best. We're just trying to keep our kids as our kids because they are making the decision.
Trying to meet the needs of our families.
I get that, but I also fear that you're opening a door for kids to not be in the building. You're making it too easy. And if our goal is to have kids in the classroom, I, I, it's a double-edged sword, it really is.
But if they want to go virtual.
But I feel like.
And we don't have it, they're going to go to McFarland.
But if we can offer it for certain hours of the day, I think as a district, we have to look at other opportunities for our students then as well. I mean, you're allowing, this opens up a whole nother can of worms for me, but you're allowing kids that are doing their AP classes here, sitting in a study hall, well, they can choose to go virtual and they can be at home doing that. Like, so I feel like there's so many other opportunities for our kids that we have to also address and look at other than this as well. If we're going to do this, we have to look into other opportunities to make it equitable for all students who do want to be here but still want the flexibility because they don't want to do the online schooling. So, I'm hesitant to say yes or no either way, because I think there's other things that we have to consider to make it equal for the whole district.
I'm almost wondering, just a thought, especially since it says we're looking at a rapid rate of like January, that originally, and again, this is just my two cents, thinking quickly, that this not be a transitional program. Like if you're in virtual, you're in it, like this is what you do, you don't come back and forth in the building. And if there is a unique situation, like maybe there's not AP Calc on virtual and they're a senior and they want to have that, that that becomes kind of where they come and they request that, like they, it's a special, just, I don't think I go to the board, but whatever, but it's a discussion around what's the reason, what's the rationale that you are, you know, wanting to take this class in person, kind of like what we do if you want to take it virtually, if you want to go to Southwest Tech or you don't, Platteville or wherever, pick up those classes. I mean, I feel like that, you know, that might be a, we're calling it a virtual school, right? So, this is a virtual option or schooling, so you're choosing to be virtual 100% of the time. Still with the W, for test, possibly the WIA options to be in clubs and sports, that's something that homeschooling, correct? If they can tap into all of those things. So, that's actually my thoughts, like it's kind of a, and then down the road if this explodes and it's like really successful, that okay, maybe there are conversations about it becoming more transitional, but that's just my two cents.
I guess I'm wondering what the conversation was at boards that now have a virtual school, the Prairie Deschene's, the McFarland's, the whomever. I mean, they probably had maybe all those same thoughts and.
So, Prairie Deschene is the, is the different one. Prairie Deschene actually started a virtual school, a virtual charter school.
Oh, okay.
They were losing hundreds of thousands of dollars every year and it was, it was exploding where they said, we need to invest in this to keep some of our own kids. So, they're different, they're the one who, the only one in Southwest Wisconsin that actually has one, and some of our kids have open-rolled into Prairie Deschene. So, that's how they did that, so it's a little different.
Yeah, their charter school line item, remember, that's a fairly new sense on our revenue limit worksheet. It's like more than quadrupled in one year, so I think they, I'm, I haven't, you know, asked their school business manager, but I can imagine if you all of a sudden have, go from $100,000 expense to a $600,000 expense, they're like, we have to come up with something because we're paying, that's, that's not even, that's not like open enrollment, that is just their, their private school, what they're paying for a private school charters. So, they were like, hey, we, we have to do something here.
You have to provide a charter.
Yes, yeah.
So, is it administration's concern that 14 is going to turn into 20 next year as more people learn about virtual options, or is it a one-year anomaly or?
That's a concern, whether it'll happen or not, I don't know, but it's a, it's a, it's a concern we have for sure.
I mean, I guess, given this virtual world, which I totally agree with Julie, I'd rather have them all in school and not give them an option, but obviously 14 know that there's a virtual school and does that become 24 next year?
Is there a rush that we are trying to make this for second semester or are we, can we be prudent about it and really look at all options and this is something that we do start up the 26, 27 school year?
We had talked about both.
I mean, is there, is there an urgency to it or is it something we can say, okay, we're developing this, but we want to make sure all of our ducks are in a row and we've really considered everything that's on docket for August, September 26?
What?
I just feel very rushed. I mean, we're in November right now, you're just going to potentially roll this out, how many, I don't know, I just.
If, if next year, if we only had, if we got back down to five, would you still want to do virtual school or would that be your recommendation? Or what's kind of like that cutoff of now it's probably too many kids to not? Because obviously we're losing five kids every year and not questioning doing a virtual school. So, is it like 10 kids?
I think the difference with those, those five kids, like we knew what those were and they were bear, like varying scenarios. We're seeing an increase in social anxiety, we're not the only school who's having this, you know, other school boards are having the same conversation probably this month exactly, because the increase of virtual schools has just, has gone up. So, that, that's a concern that we have, is that it's going to keep going up.
And I believe with the, with the 14 that we have, I think only one of them is a senior that will graduate out, so they'll potentially still be 13 next year.
I can see both sides of this and, I mean, it goes without saying that we all think in-person instruction is best, but I also don't want to make that decision for parents and not give them an option. So, that's what they are deciding and that's what they want for their kid, and we can do that. If there's somebody that didn't think about it until we offer it, that's, that's, in my mind, that's more of a parent decision versus our decision?
I've heard, I've had parents tell me, you're not going to tell me how I'm going to educate my kids. They, they get real belligerent.
And the reason we wanted to go kind of with that soft launch in the second semester is that gives us the whole second semester to write that handbook and to work through some of the issues that we don't know our issues yet before we, this summer, we can start advertising that for people that send us open enrollment applications for McFarland. We can have Chris contact them and say, hey, we've got our own option here and here's our handbook, we can send this to them.
So, you wouldn't be advertising it out right now so much?
No, it's, the soft launch would be if, if this is.
You'd just promote it to the 14 kids we know we've lost.
Yep, and if, if somebody's, if we get another letter that says, hey, I want to go to open enrollment, then we can reach out to them. But, you know, we would kind of be flying the plane while we're building it, which is what you do in, in soft, with soft launches. You know, we don't have the handbook yet.
So, are, or have we contacted these 14 kids or the ones that went virtual to know that they did or didn't sign up for a whole year?
No, we haven't done that. We won't do that, tell you guys back.
Such that if you actually offered it second semester, it would get kids back if they were willing?
Yeah, we'll do that once we know which direction you guys want to go after the vote on.
I have two more questions, sorry, this is more procedural stuff. Interesting that it popped in my head when I think about, how are we tracking attendance? Because I'm guessing as a student, we still have to track attendance for them, so is that like monitime coursework and how, I mean, I'm just curious, are those things we thinking about, like how will we track that piece of it?
And then obviously statewide testing, they'll have to, students are considered district students, so they're still going to have to take the state test as well, so some things that.
We did ask the first, what did they answer for the first one? As far as attendance, do they?
Attendance, I think it's more, well, they have some leeway. The expectation is that they log on each day for at least some portion of the day. They do have, you know, some leeway. They have a start date and an end date and if, if they go two days without logging in, obviously somebody's going to check in with them and at that point, yes, that would count as an absence that way.
But yet you said it's self-paced.
It is self-paced. Like I said, they, they do have a start date and a finish date. With our summer program, like if they don't do what's expected every day, they, they won't make the end goal. So it is, it is rigorous enough that they do have to log on pretty much every day if they're going to make the cutoff.
Any other discussion? We may discuss this again because I think it's on the agenda, correct?
Yep.
If it gets voted down in their period of time where we can't revisit it again?
Nope. There's no. It could be on the next one.
It could be on the next one too.
Next month, yep. All righty, public resignation, is there any?
Nobody was in.
Okay. And then over to new business, approve the date and time for the December and January meetings.
Yep, our current December 25th meeting is set for Wednesday, December 17th at 6:00 PM. There's been a couple of requests from board members to change that to December 10th. And then for the January meeting, Gary, Dan and I are going to go to the State Education Convention at that normal time, so we're also recommending we move that up a week, so that would be Wednesday, January 14th. So that recommendation would be with those two changes, Wednesday, December 17th and Wednesday, January 14th.
We need December 10th.
December 10th.
Yes, Wednesday, December 10th.
Is that all right, Board?
I can make the 10th, but if it's, I'm just one of all of the cell reveals connected, I would probably go ahead and still do it.
I'm good with both those dates and I'm not good with the 17th of December, so, but again, it doesn't.
Or move it into the 10th.
Yep. It work.
Oh, December 17th, I'm sorry.
The regular scheduled 17th I cannot make, but.
I think Julie, you couldn't make the 17th either.
I have a conflict the 10th, but I can, I can work around that, so I'm, I can make it work, yes, for the 10th of December.
Okay, so the 10th and I'll get the 14th. All right, is there a motion that someone would like to make with those dates?
I'll move to approve the December regular board meeting for this Wednesday, December 10th at 6 o'clock and the January meeting for Wednesday, January 14th at 6 o'clock.
You have a second?
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, Schweiger?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item B is approve the WIA co-op for gymnastics with Southwestern.
We had the last month approved that Schelsberg could join us and now we're just approving the WIA contract that we'll have to sign after the meeting here. So this is the exact same thing we do every year, except this year we added Schelsberg to it.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll move to approve the WIA co-op for gymnastics with Southwestern School District.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to give it to Joe.
Schweiger? Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And NC is approve the start of the Cuba City Virtual Academy in 2026. So there obviously isn't a motion there. I guess what is the board's desire?
You guys have options, you can either continue the discussion or somebody can make a motion and we vote on it and see where it goes. So it's really up to you.
I will ask first, are there any more questions or comments?
If you make the motion, is it for the virtual academy to be a transitional option? They can come back and forth or would it be?
See, I, I guess that one would be, you guys are going to approve the handbook. So if that's something you guys feel strongly about is not having a transitional, you know, item, then we put that in the handbook. You know, if you guys say, well, we don't, we don't want people to do that and still be in our athletic teams, then we put that in the handbook. Like even though it's WIA eligible, that doesn't mean that we have to allow it. So those are all kind of handbook things and we can work on those handbook things, you know, throughout second semester.
So it's just more or less whether we want an academy or not and then we figure out what kind of academy?
Yep.
But if you have someone who wants to switch at semester, then you're saying we don't have a handbook for those participants?
Yeah.
Just like reading the whole, we don't have a.
We don't have, we don't have a program.
I would personally almost like to table it and kind of do more discussion about it and if we want to try to aim for next year, but I just, I don't know.
I guess if you, if you table it, it's going to be at the December meeting, so I don't know, you probably, would you have time to start anything for a second semester?
Yeah, because when we say January, second semester really doesn't start until January 20th. Do you guys remember? I don't remember the calendar off the top of my head. It's mid-January.
Yeah, let's say the 15th is the last day of the quarter, 16th would be the Friday, 17th, 19th.
I just didn't know what the lead time would be if you wanted to start it in terms of all of the things you'd have to do, including publicizing it.
Are you, are you thinking table it just to think about it more or is something?
I think so, or more have, more have framework put into place to see how it's going to be. I mean.
So are you saying you'd want the handbook done before you vote on it?
I would think so, yeah. Just because of how fluid it is or could be, then it might not turn out right or how I would hope to help frame it, I guess.
I don't like limiting transition. If I've got a kid that wants to be in band or take egg class or, you know, take Ms. Merwin's class, why would we not allow that? I mean, I think we should if we're going to do it. Athletic teams, same thing, you know, why not? To me, I look at it that our numbers went from five to 14. I would hate to see that number go from 14 to 18 or 21 or whatever it may be.
So kind of like a homeschool, right? Because homeschool kids can come and take classes, correct?
Yep.
They can come in and like come in and.
And they're eligible for athletics as well, correct?
Yes.
Homeschool kids can be a part of athletics.
They can open enrollment.
Correct.
So are you saying we would cap it at two then, just like a homeschool? Where they can come in for up to two classes here, like a homeschool? I guess that's where I, I'm just.
Do we have protocol for homeschool students, such as there's, I mean, I know it's different, but I mean.
I think we have any homeschool students that do come in, but I think they can come up to two adults.
We do have a homeschool student who takes two classes, but I believe school to work is one of them and, yeah, so.
Aaron, do you have any idea like timeline on what it would take to get a handbook up and running? Like if we approved this tonight, like could we have a framework of a handbook by December so we have an idea of like answers to all these questions? I don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of you doing all this work and then you say no, like I'm one. But if we say yes, like and develop that handbook.
I can have a draft by December 10th if that's what you're asking.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
So if there's no more questions, I guess I will ask the question, does somebody want to make a motion? Because again, if there's no motion made, then it gets tabled.
I will move to approve the start of the Cuba City Virtual Academy in 2026 as presented.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Schweiger?
No.
Joel?
No.
Bart?
Yes.
White? Bowden?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carried. I will work on that draft and get that to you guys before the December meeting and then there are things that we wanted to discuss or alter from that handbook at the December meeting, we can have those as items to look at as well.
Item D then is approve the addition of a Cuba City head girls wrestling coach to the district handbook.
Yep, the limitation between boys and girls was approved by the Board of Control of the WIA back in June of '24. And to clarify, there's no requirement that schools need to have different coaches. This would be a local decision, but our coach last year that did boys and girls did resign from the girls' side of that. And it's, that's just kind of how schools are operating. So girls simply are no longer able to wrestle on the boys' team where last year they could. So if they have a girls' team. So scroll, scroll, sorry, schools without a girls' team shall not have athletes be in the girls' tournament series. So this is just approving that we have a girls' coach and we'll act on that actually later in personnel, but we've got to add that to the district handbook as last year that was not in there.
Questions, Board?
Is there a limit or is there a number for what makes a, constitutes a team?
Um.
Can you just do it with one person?
You can do it with one person, yep. Do you know what our numbers are at that? Carrie's a couple of weeks ago said they were at three, so is it two now?
Two, maybe three, but the first night of practice is tonight, so we don't know.
So wrestling is just Cuba City, it's not?
It's co-op, it's Cuba City.
It's a tie-up.
And Southwestern. Yep.
So they're just a couple of girls from the three.
I think we've got a handful of their eighth graders though that potentially next year will grow that team.
If there's no other questions, there's a motion?
I just got a question, you, you said it's not in the handbook yet? I mean, are we hiring a coach before we have a position or?
We're adding it to the handbook right now and then in about three items later, we'll approve the coach.
There's a motion to hire a wrestling coach.
Well, maybe I got to get on my agenda here.
Yep, so we're on, we're on new business.
Sorry, my apologies.
No problem.
Would someone move?
I'll move to approve the addition of CCHS head girls wrestling coach to the district handbook as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Schweiger?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item E is approve overnight FFA halftime conference in Stevens Point, January 17, 18.
Yep, this is another FFA event that requires an overnight stay that we recommend you approve.
If there's no questions, would someone move?
I'll move to approve overnight FFA halftime conference in Stevens Point, January 17th and 18th, 2026 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Schweiger?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving to personnel, A is approve an annual medical visit incentive for all staff.
Yeah, this was a recommendation I got from attending a health service event hosted by medical associates this summer. By providing incentive for staff, and our incentive would be that they can have that last day of in-service, which would be Friday, June 5th off. If they get a physical or medical checkup by their medical provider by a certain date, we, we pick Friday, May 1st to get a checkup every year. Medical associates really recommend, they said this makes a big difference for a lot of their customers is early detection of any problems. And a lot of people just don't ever go to the doctor. This was their, they had a lot of recommendations, this was the one that I thought was the most applicable to schools because we could do that. And we think this is going to lead to overall better health of our staff and overall better health by our staff helps our line item with, you know, medical insurance. So this is something that we thought was no cost and could be really great for our teachers or for our staff.
Is this an individual thing? So individually, if you get a, you get, or is it, it's all or nothing?
Oh, no, so like if Katie says, hey, I went to the doctor, she lets us know by May 1st, you know, she'll get the results of that, she just shows, yep.
She just has to show approval.
I went this, then she doesn't have to come to that in-service day.
And that would just be the employee, not the sponsor or family or?
The employee.
The employee.
So it's all staff?
It's, it's available to all staff.
Even if they don't take our insurance?
So it's food service, custodian, et cetera?
Yep.
Okay.
And they don't have in-service day, sorry? So what's their incentive?
Oh, we did talk about that. We, we did talk about that.
$200.
It was what?
$200.
There was a financial incentive, it was a $200.
$200.
$200 for support?
Yes.
You're sure it was $200?
I feel like that's the number that we talked about, you didn't think it was that?
I thought it was under. Because we talked about that, teachers, there would be no cost, but for, and for custodians, there would be no cost because we would give them an extra vacation day.
Oh, maybe it was.
Shoot, and I didn't put that in there.
I didn't, I don't remember, maybe now, I just did a quick calculation and maybe it was more 120. I just, going off of some numbers that we talked about, they probably want, the board probably wants to know.
Yeah.
Should we table that and vote on that in December?
Any thoughts on that, just while we finalize that? Because I think.
I like the idea. I just would like to know exactly what we're proving.
I know we, we had talked about it, but I didn't write it in there.
I would also like to note how many would be affected with a payout. So how many are we talking that would require a payout versus the in-service day? Does that make sense?
Yep. I think it's a great idea. I think if we can win, anyone can get ahead of it, I think that's.
Okay, we'll bring that back.
All right, we're going to table that one then. Which then moves us to B, which is to approve the hiring of the Cuba City High School Girls' Wrestling Coach Bradley Holmes.
Yep, this recommendation comes from Coach Lawson and Mr. Sander, both recommend Mr. Holmes, who worked with our boys' wrestling team last year.
If there's no question, would somebody make that motion?
I'll move to approve the hiring of the CCHS Girls Wrestling Coach Bradley Holmes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Schweiger?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carried.
C is approve Brady Coltherd as volunteer middle school boys' basketball coach.
This recommendation comes from Mr. Jacob Hall, who has them as the coach and would like to volunteer with them.
Somebody make that motion?
I'll move to approve Brady Coltherd as volunteer CCMAS boys' basketball coach as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Schweiger?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And D is approve Katie Schrader as the high school pom-poms coach.
Katie is Cuba City High School Poms alumni and current elementary school teacher. We're excited that she has, she's accepted this position, that we can offer this to her. her. Ms. Lawson, Mr. Sander and I all recommend that you approve this.
If there's no questions...
I'll move to approve Katie Schrader as the CCHS pom-pom coach. I'll second.
Schweiger?
Yes.